Thank you. I would like to call the May 14th Board of Education meeting to order. It is 7:01 and we are at the Nashua High School North Lecture Hall. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Mosher?
I'm here.
Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Present.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Hohensie?
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Porter?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Here.
Other attendees, Dr. Mosley?
Here.
Mr. Donovan? And Ms. O'Gara?
Both here.
We have a quorum, Madam President.
And our student rep?
And our student rep, Ms. Sweeney is here, but Mr. Gillis is not here tonight.
He's studying. Mr. Guarino will read the prayer and could Mr. Donovan lead us in the pledge?
Mr. Mosher is joining us tonight by telephone as he recuperates at home. And are you by yourself, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir. Will everyone please stand?
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, can we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry. Roll call.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Is there any communication outside the consent agenda? Okay. We're now at the public question comment period. If anybody has anything to address that is on the agenda this evening, now's the time to come up and speak to it. Nobody. Okay. Dr. Mosley, superintendent's comments.
Good evening, everyone. It's finally feeling like spring out there in the late afternoon. This will be brief because we have some things we want to get to. First of all, I want to say that on May 4th, I had the privilege of attending the North-South baseball game as the Battle of the Bridges. I believe the South won that competition, is that correct? Okay. You should say yes anyways, Haley, because you're from the South. I said you won.
Yes.
There you go. So it was really nice. One of the things, I just want to be very clear, is that I did throw a strike. It was so fast that the catcher actually dropped the ball. It's not because it fell before him. So if you're watching that on television, please go slow motion. I actually did reach the plate. My kids and my wife were giving me the guff leading up to that event. They said, "You better not embarrass yourself. You know, you better reach the plate." At first, I was like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah," but I got it. And thank you to the North and the South kids for helping me practice. It was a great event. Lisa Gingrich again does a wonderful job orchestrating, coordinating, getting all of those high school and middle school kids to participate in this event. I say middle school because our middle schools were there. It was a free hot dog and a Coke for any eighth grader that showed up to the event. And that was just really nice to have that for our kids. And it was questionable whether it was going to happen or not because of the weather, but they did a nice job. Kind of moving to contracts, we are very close to finalizing the wording and the agreement with the principal contracts and the assistant principal contracts. And so I would let the board know that within the next board meeting, you'll see that in your packets, and we'll certainly have a good discussion around that. Last week, we presented the budget to the alderman for questions and clarification. It was a good discussion. We got some good, I'd say, some feedback, some commentary from the alderman. Certainly, there is more discussion to come. And the next week, we are going to be presenting up, but there's a divisional budget meeting coming up for the city, citywide, in which anyone from the public can come and ask questions about our budget, not just our budget, but the budget from the different divisions, police, fire, education. And certainly, we look forward to that process. Last Friday was the last meeting for the New Hampshire School Board, the New Hampshire Superintendent's Conference. Once a month, the superintendents get together and they just, we talk about some things. The commissioner comes and gives a talk with us. We also talk about things that are pressing to the educational system, public school education. One of the discussions was SB 193 that was voted down. And, you know, that was something that we talked about. And so, believe it or not, it's kind of a little bit deja vu. And, you know, it's kind of deja vu in a sense that, is it the Muse Conference? I mean, the Muse Festival that was here? The Music Festival, right? You know, the Music Festival? I remember last year that that actually got rained out. And so, I was, we drove up here to attend it, it got rained out, then we drove back here on that Sunday just to kind of look around. But it's just amazing how this year is flying by and it's 2018 and, you know, we're approaching the summer. So that's brief and we'll certainly have more discussion about other agenda items on the agenda for the BOE meeting tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Board members' response to the superintendent's comments. Anybody over here? Anybody over here? No? Okay. Student members of the board comments.
Hello, everyone. So, as I mentioned before, it is AP testing week for the high school students of Nashua. So for the past, last week and then this week, our AP students have been going to res and taking their tests. I know Patrick isn't here tonight because he has Calc tomorrow morning at 7:30 and then we both have Lang on Wednesday. At Self right now, the choir concert is tonight. And then tomorrow will also be the band concert. And yes, I believe Self did win everything for Battle of the Bridge. So at least we won the majority. One other thing I wanted to talk about is the cap gown vote program that has been, Nashua has signed on to along with eight other cities throughout the country. So this is, this program's a way to get younger students, or at least graduating high school classes, to vote in the upcoming elections because these young students or the younger voters have very low turnout. It's about 20% as the paper in front of me says. So I think it would be a great idea if we could be able to bring this program to the high schools and help register the graduating class to vote. That's all.
Oh, thank you. And we wish Mr. Gillis good luck tomorrow in his test, his AP test, and you too. That's, okay. Committee on Finance and Operations. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. We have two items of action that came before the Committee on Finance and Operations that we had recommended for approval by the full board. The first item is improvements to Bicentennial and Fairgrounds Elementary School Playground improvements. A description of those improvements, the types of playground equipment, is in the packet. These projects are financed by the PTO. I know that Bicentennial, they're going to put a fence there because the balls keep going off the property when the kids play in the schoolyard. So, among other improvements, also Fairgrounds is going to get a well-needed lift, well-needed improvements at their school, too. So, I would like to, I would like to move to recommend, to approve the Bicentennial and Fairgrounds Elementary School Playground Improvement projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody want to speak to this? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'm just curious, everything is funded by the PTO or are there any expenses that the district will incur?
As far as I remember from the meeting, the PTO was going to fund the improvements.
Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. My understanding was the district was going to help do some of the groundwork, but there's no price denoted here in terms of that. But I thought the, PTO was getting the equipment and having it delivered, but I thought we were doing some of the prep work.
Ms. Dr. Mosley?
Yeah, per the contract with the AFSCME union, typically, they're there and they make sure that things are put in place. It doesn't cost us any more money typically there. Occasionally, they might be a little overtime if they do it on a Saturday, but per the contract, we are required to have, excuse me. I'm having a hard time with that. Per the contract, we will have one or two people there to make sure that the process runs smoothly and pour any cement or things like that. But for the most part, all the equipment is being purchased and all the wood chips, et cetera, will be purchased by the PTOs.
And I believe traditionally, we don't put a price in for the work that our people would do. And also, if I remember, they had volunteers coming in to do, I think it was at Fairgrounds, spreading the mulch. They had enlisted volunteers, so.
Correct.
But thank you to the PTOs and to the people that supported these projects. Appreciate it. And I'm sure the kids will enjoy it. When is your next meeting?
We have to vote.
Okay.
Okay. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
The motion carries nine to zero.
Our second item from the Committee on Finance and Operations is to recommend the purchase of a new facilities calendar software. And that, there's a description of it in the handouts. So I would like to, I would like to make a motion, I would, I move to recommend to approve the purchase of a new facilities calendar software from Master Library at a cost of $9,250.
I second that. Did you want to speak to that?
Mr. Donovan could actually describe it if he doesn't mind a little bit more in detail than I can.
Not at all. We currently have a calendar software that we use to rent our facilities and keep track of our gyms and fields, et cetera. It's seen better days. It's difficult to use. It's very difficult to use for the outside people that are trying to rent the facilities. So we decided, IT put together a proposal, sent it out. We only got back two bids, but the Master Library was one that they were hoping to get back. They're very happy with that. They think it's a good choice for our district. So typically, we don't bring forward things to the board under $10,000, but since we had put a proposal together and discussed it at a previous meeting, I thought we would update the board and let everyone know that this is the one that they would like.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
Is this the same program that will be doing the BOE calendar that we see on the web? Is it the same, is that the same thing we're talking about?
I'm not 100% sure on that. I'd have to find out for you.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. At the committee meeting, I asked the question of if, as part of the IT evaluation, they looked at what we had inside the school district and if they had the Exchange, Microsoft Exchange server. Were you able to find out that information?
I did not hear back that from IT. I did not hear back from them on that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Just for my own clarity, this is so that it's more user-friendly for outside agencies to be able to like log on and?
And rent the facilities, yes. What we use now is very difficult for people. So we've, what we've, it's become now is we've kind of locked it off to the outside. And if you want, you have to call Sharon Frothingham who works in district office and she goes through the process with you. But we would like it to be able to, that outside people could go in and make requests right from their homes or businesses.
Out of curiosity, do we charge for the rentals?
Definitely, yes. Yeah, we have, there's a policy in there which talks about the various prices. And basically, you pay so much for each facility or field, we have a price and there's a pricing list in the policy. And then they also pay for the custodial time because we need people to watch over.
And one final question. So right now, they're calling and having a chat with someone. Is there any concern or oversight to make sure that people who are renting the facility are doing so appropriately, that it's like craft shows and other community agencies and not necessarily anything that we would find objectionable?
Yes, that's part of the, to rent the facility, they have to sign a contract, so they have to meet with that person and go through the process. So we would keep an eye out for anything that was unsavory.
Thank you.
Any else? So the motion is to approve the purchase of a new facilities calendar software from Master Library at a cost of $9,250. Okay. Roll call?
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
The motion carries seven to two.
Okay. And when is your next meeting? Do you have that?
Sure. Our next meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee will be at 6:30 PM at Nashua High School North, June 12th.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Committee on Policy, Ms. Raymond?
We have not met since the last board meeting. Our next meeting is tomorrow at 6:00 PM here in this room.
Okay. Thank you. Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation.
Thank you. Our next meeting is May 21st in this building. The topic is going to be, Dr. McKinney's going to answer some questions that were raised the last meeting. Then we're going to be talking about the book schedule, book purchasing schedule, I think. And I can't remember the third one. He's not here to refresh my memory, so be surprised.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just real quick, Dr. McKinney and Mrs. Patrick, they're actually at a I-Ready conference for the next two days, so that's why they're not here.
Okay.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Committee on Human Resources.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to reconsider the approval of the 2018-19 teacher principal renomination list dated April the 30th, 2018. And the reason for that is because Ms. Oden's voted and she wanted to stay. So we voted, I moved the vote, and it was seconded by Mr. Kaufman to approve the administrative recommendation of Richard Wardman, principal at Mount Pleasant Elementary, for the 2018 school year at an annual salary of $94,625. So voted. And then I moved and seconded by Mr. Kaufman to approve the 2018-19 teachers principal renomination list dated April the 30th, 2018. So voted.
Thank you. I appreciate that, but I think we're going to have to bring that up at new business. I had requested you to bring that up for reconsideration because I just, I just missed it and I voted on that and I should have abstained. So I would appreciate it, but I think we need to bring it up under new business, okay? Thank you.
Okay. And then therefore, our next HR meeting would be May 23rd at North from 5:30 to 7:30.
Okay. Thank you.
On May 23rd?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Liaison reports. Anybody have a liaison report? No? Okay. Unfinished business, last day of school clarification.
Couple things. There's been some discussion around what is the last day, the last couple of days of school and what does that look like in terms of the different bargaining units? What is, you know, if I can just kind of sum it up a little bit, the question is, what is the plan? What is the district doing to make sure that this is all consistent with contracts and making sure that the public knows what's going on? So I just felt that, based on some feedback that I got from faculty, from different individuals in the community, as well as in terms of communication to make sure that we're all clear on the last two days of school, I'm making this presentation now and followed by in communication out to the faculty and it will be subsequently communicated out to the public. If I can just summarize what happened at the last special BOE meeting, Ms. Timmons moved, this is the best I can do here? Like that? Ms. Timmons moved, I'm sorry, Ms. Timmons moved, seconded by Ms. Porter to waive June 25th, 2018, for all teachers and give hourly employees the option to work or not work. So, the question with the contracts always become, and can really be sensitive, it's particularly around the hourly employees. And what does that feel and look like? And who are these individuals? And so, when we look at our contracts for the last day of school, I just, just to be clear to the public, on June 22nd, that's a half-day for our kids. So that will be the last day of school for our kids, June 22nd. That afternoon, we tentatively have scheduled, that afternoon, we have tentatively scheduled safety training with the Nashua, Nashua School, the Nashua Public, I'm sorry, the Nashua Police Department. That's what's going to happen on that June 22nd. I've said it a couple of times in meetings, but I just felt like I wanted to reiterate that. So when we talk about hourly employees, we talk about making sure that within the contracts that we are abiding by that. And so, with that said, we've looked at all of our contracts with hourly employees and certainly by allowing and having the option of our hourly employees to work on that, on that Monday, the 25th, we are not in violation of any of our contracts. And so, we're sensitive to the fact that in our contracts for hourly employees, and I'm looking at the parap contract, if you look at the language in our contracts, it allows us to either pay the employees, giving them an opportunity or not. So if I can just, and I'm going to kind of summarize and then Ms. O'Gara's going to talk a little bit about each of these contracts and why we're, why we, by allowing our paraprofessionals or people who are hourly employees to work on that Monday, we're not in violation of that. We are by far, when it comes to weather-related incidences, particularly around school cancellations, so if you look at 7.5 and you move down and it says non-weather related, and it reads "school canceled," "canceled," "all other non-weather." So in that situation, on June 25th, it's a non-weather situation, meaning that a paraprofessional can either use their personal leave, use a personal leave, or they can come to work. And so, you know, to summarize this and then I'll turn it over to Ms. O'Gara, by allowing hourly employees to come in and to earn some, earn the pay is actually something that doesn't say that in the contract. But we're willing to say, any hourly employee that wants to come to work on that Monday, and people have asked us, what are they going to do on that Monday? On that Monday, they can, we are exploring doing some safety training as well as doing some building base, training around 504, civil rights. So there's a lot of things that that could be done for some of our hourly employees. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Ms. O'Gara and she'll explain a little bit more about how the hourly employees are, can be compensated during that time on Monday, and more importantly, how we're not in violation of the contracts.
I am going to go in order. So I'm on page, I'm going to start on page one with the food service workers. What you are looking at is an excerpt from our current contract for food service. And this is terms and conditions of employment, the work day and the work year. So our tier one cooks, so the cooks in all our school buildings, their, they, their schedule is 180 school days, not necessarily pupil days, school days, plus three days before the start of school, one day at the end of the year. And then we have lead cooks. So the lead cooks are at North, South, and Elm, our three biggest schools. So lead cooks are required to work 180 school days plus five days before the start and one at the conclusion of the year. Now, most of the employees in this bargaining unit are food service assistants. And they're broken up into tier two and tier three. And it's really about the amount of hours that they work in a week, in a day, and in a year. So it, the collective bargaining agreement says for those food service assistants that they only work when food service is provided to students. So there's no food service, there's no food on Monday, June 25th. As far as the cooks, if the last day of school is the Friday, it may be that they're all engaged in getting, cleaning up the kitchen and getting everything together to close off for the end of school. So if they're not done with that by Monday, the cooks will be doing that. And if they are done with it, then in the contract, the director has the right to waive them working that last day. So we may have worked for the tier ones, but all, we're, what we are saying, what Dr. Mosley is saying is, we're willing to pay them if they come in to work, but they are not required to work. It's not a food service day. Okay? Is everybody all set with that one? Mr. Kaufman?
Kaufman, so they didn't, so did, they, they didn't get 180 days, did they? With the makeup days that the kids have, that, that week that ends the 22nd, the kids were short one day, right? So everybody was? So, everybody was, based upon the count of days, that was like, I'll just say it this way, that Friday is the 179th day?
Yeah.
Is that, am I trying to understand?
So, if they didn't show up to work, they didn't get paid? Like, they didn't, we didn't pay them during a snow day? If that's what the question is?
Yes, school is canceled.
Teachers get paid on the snow days, but the hourly staff does not. Is that correct?
Teachers aren't really paid on snow days, they're paid a salary. We'll get to the teachers.
We'll get to the salary piece in a sec.
Okay.
Well, I'm just thinking of a teacher's check, so if we have a snow day, do they get a full check or are they short one day?
The only reason that they get a full check is, well, one, they're salaried, but two, they have equalized payments of their salary. So, if you're a teacher and you wanna spread your salary through the summer months, you have 26 equal installments of that salary. Teachers don't get paid for holidays and they don't get paid for school vacations, but their payments are equalized, so as of a benefit to them, and this happens all across the United States, that they're paid either during the school year, 21 or 22 pays, or they get to stretch it through the summer for 26.
They don't get paid for holidays? Vacation days?
School, no, they do not get paid for vacation? No? Not for school vacation, they're getting a check because they've stretched, oh, sorry, they've stretched their money over it, but they're not being paid for a holiday or for school vacations.
I'm assuming this is like every other salaried employee where you get your annual rate that you have negotiated?
Uh huh.
And then you, some companies let you choose that you're gonna be paid bi-weekly, some are monthly, some are whatever, so are teachers have the option to be paid bi-weekly for 26 months or bi-weekly for the school year, right?
22 or 26 pays in Nashua.
But it's the, their pay is for the year, no matter how many days are in the year, like, right? So, that might vary.
Their pay is reflective of 183 days, which does not include the holidays or the vacations, it's spread over the vacations and the holidays, so it looks like they're getting paid, but they've stretched their pay over it. Okay. Page two. The paraeducator contract. The paraeducator contract does say pupil days, however, when you get to 7:5 work day, work year, there is a chart about what happens in weather-related circumstances and non-weather-related circumstances. And so, for non-weather-related circumstances, there's three things that could happen, there could be a delayed opening or early dismissal, and it talks about what would happen, they can arrive late or leave, arrive late or may leave or arrive late. The two on the school cancellation, one is a state waiver, so if school's being canceled through a state waiver, we would pay, we would have to pay the paraeducators for that day. In this circumstance, for Monday, June 25th, school is not canceled by state waiver, it is canceled under all other non-weather-related circumstances, and paraeducators have the option of choosing to use their personal day to be paid. And if you go down to the sentence underneath the table, it says, "In extenuating circumstances, the superintendent may waive the requirement to use personal time and instead pay for the mistime." So, that's clearly saying that they don't have to be paid, the superintendent can say, "Okay, instead of only those of you who have personal days who wanna use it to be paid, I can waive that and decide to pay." So, it's not a requirement. However, the school district is saying for Monday, June 25th, if you wanna come in and work and attend the trainings that we have set up, we will pay you for that day. Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks, I wanna understand, school days versus pupil days? So, part of the contract, there's a couple of days at the front end of school, like one, two, or three days. So, those are school days and then the 180 days are the pupil days, those are instructional days, is that, is that how that gets worked out?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman, the best way to describe it is that the pupil days are kids coming to school, kids in front of you. The school days are kids, no kids in front of you, that's how it works.
So, then I have another question on the personal leave aspect of this, so we're reaching our 180th day, so people earn a certain number of personal days during the course of the year, and I think, are they earned as they go or they get them all at the front end and then they have the time to use them?
They get them in the front end and they also, there's a provision in their contract that when there's a snow day, they can choose to use that day, their personal day for a snow day as well.
So, those personal days are for the calendar year or are they for the, do they, does it start in September?
Pardon me? School year.
So, from September to the end of June?
Yeah.
Or August, whenever we start?
Yeah.
So, there aren't, so if they don't use their personal time by the end of June, by June 25th, do they lose any if they haven't used them?
I believe they lose them.
Okay, so there's an incentive if someone's sitting on a day?
Nope.
To use it?
Some, depending on my understanding.
We're talking about the Paris, right? I'm not talking?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Mr. Marku is checking his contract because he thinks it's possible that they roll over into their sick time.
Some, like the teachers, it's my understanding for the teacher contract, that they can retain their personal days.
So, Mr. Marku has confirmed that they do roll over into the sick days?
They do?
For Paris.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yep, so they do the same thing as teachers.
But if they don't, to answer your question, Mr. Kaufman, is that if the, if there's a snow day, the teachers retain their salaries because it's, because they're salary employees, whereas hourly employees don't, so they have a choice of either taking a personal day or getting paid for that snow day or not.
Right, I was just trying to understand if the year ended in June and those days did not roll over into something else, the employees, if they had any left, it would be an incentive for them to use it, that's all. I was just trying to understand, because they have the option to use it, so they can, they can use a day if they want to?
Provided that they have a day.
Right.
Assuming they have one, right.
Right.
Or they can come in and work and get paid.
Right.
And not everybody has that rollover into the, some do and some don't. Okay, any questions about paraeducators before I go to page three? We also have non-affiliated support staff, and they are the food service delivery driver, sign language interpreters that are in our deaf and hard-of-hearing programs, technology integration assistants, we refer to them as TIA's, and they work in the elementary schools, in the tech labs, the, we have one speech-language assistant, Title I homeschool coordinators in the Title I schools, we have ELL liaisons, lunch monitors, crossing guards, and 21st Century staff. There is no, they are non-affiliated, they're not affiliated with any union, there is no rule or standard that requires them to be paid on Monday, June 25th, but we are still saying that we, they are welcome to come to work and we will pay them if they come to work for the day.
If I can just add to that, when, for instance, you may be wondering, well, what's a lunch monitor or a crossing guard, why do they come to school on a Monday to be paid? What are they going to do? It's a fair question, and part of what, what I'm going to do or the leadership team is going to do is figure out, number one, how many of those individuals want to come to work to be paid. Secondly, is that I'm gonna set up, in coordination with the police department, training, safety training for those individuals that choose to pursue it. So, what I'm going to do is just, first of all, see or gauge the level of participation for any of these employees that want to engage in safety training, and two, if there is a high interest, then my goal is to schedule that safety training. I think it's important for every single employee, teacher, crossing guard, 21st Century staff, sign language interpreter, food service delivery driver, everyone should know exactly what entails in terms of safety training. That's all contingent upon the police department's schedule and I can certainly, I'm going to pursue that as soon as I get a gauge on how many people are interested in working on that Monday, the 25th.
When do you need to know by? Like, when are you asking staff to let you know?
I'd say by the end of May, because, you know, well, that's running out of time.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, I noticed one group that's not on this list, they're not, they're not, they're not non-affiliated substitute teachers, so if you make the case that safety training is good for a food service delivery driver, substitute teachers are in the classroom, what will be done to, then perhaps it's something that happens in August for the next group, I think you used to do an orientation, I don't know if you still are, but I'm saying, what I'm thinking of is substitute teachers have responsibility for the kids for a full school day, and I don't see any accommodation for the subs that we've had that have been loyal to us over the year and, or at least for the subs that would come on board in the beginning of the new school year. I think we need to do, if not, I can understand why you wouldn't do it at the back end of the year, 'cause they may not come back and things like, those lives are very fluid, but come the beginning of the next school year, I think their safety training or equivalent should be provided to the subs and any refresher, you're gonna have to run it for new employees, right, I would think? So, the substitutes, I would argue, should be included, well, are there, is there an intent to do it for the new hires?
So, I would just like to clarify that a substitute work is per diem in nature, there is no obligation on any day for them to come in and work, they choose to work, and we, when we have vacancies that need to be filled, we provide those vacancies. So, the nature of work for a substitute is not somebody who has a regularly scheduled work week, they work at their choice and they work when we have offerings to give them. So, that being said, the rest would be something that administration would have to consider, but we would have to pay, that's, and it's not in the budget, so we don't budget for a training day for substitutes.
So, we have four substitutes that are on the payroll, they receive benefits, right? So, what's happening for those people?
Any substitute who, so we have some long-term substitutes who cover for a teacher's leave, who are required to be certified by the Department of Ed, and if they're, the teacher leave lasts more than 90 days, we also provide them health insurance coverage. One of the new permanent substitutes, replacing one because we had one that is filling in for an English teacher, so they hired another one, there's not 90 days in the year, so there's not necessarily health insurance costs for all of them.
I'm speaking of the four subs for the high school?
So am I.
Not continuing subs, these are substitute teachers?
That's right.
They're considered continuing subs?
No, continuing subs are under the teacher contract.
Teacher contract, right. So, I guess my question's still unanswered, so the four people that we give benefits to, to be a substitute teacher, we tell them to come in five days a week or whatever their schedule is, how are they being accommodated in this? 'Cause we've treated them as an employee for the whole year, right?
All substitutes are employees of the Nashua School District. In addition to the four permanent subs, we have several long-term subs that are covering for teacher leaves, and under the ACA, we are required to provide them health insurance if they're regularly working 30 hours or more. So, there are others who have health insurance.
I'm still confused, but that's okay.
I'm not sure about the connection to the, they're substitutes, they're not, they don't have permanent positions with us.
My understanding is, we, in order to retain some substitute teachers and give coverage in the high school on a more regular basis, 'cause we're so low, they, the board, well, I don't even know if we voted on it, but anyway, there was the four slots and, two in each school?
Yeah, not all of them are taking health insurance, one left to become a long-term sub?
Okay.
And was replaced fairly recently, and that person doesn't have health insurance.
Okay.
Actually, two have been...
But the issue here is the training.
Training, yeah.
Right, yeah, so I don't know how you're asking if they, they too are gonna have training?
And will they get paid for attending that day?
Will they be covered under the Friday training or the Monday training?
Thank you, Ms. Van Twyver.
They can tend the Friday training, I mean, we're talking about three individuals per diem, the larger picture is you're working with kids in the district, we want you to be trained in safety training, you're gonna come back, you're gonna be a long-term sub, and now our talented long-term subs at the high school works this way, they do a really good job, and then we have coverages, not just at the high school, but throughout the entire district. We are short substitute teachers and the really good ones end up long-term subs, that's it.
I think the point, he was trying to ask, an answer to...
Can I, can I just finish, please, without being interrupted? The point is, if someone is working with our kids, they will receive, they have an option of joining our teachers, getting paid, 'cause if you're a substitute teacher and you're, want to get the training and that last half-day, you're being paid for that entire day as a substitute teacher, so on that Friday, you can attend the training with the rest of the teachers. I'll answer the question.
Ms. Van Twyver, did you wanna ask something?
I was just trying to make the point that I think Mr. Kaufman was trying to figure out when these people would get the training, 'cause he feels that it's important, so if they're gonna be teachers, would it be on Friday or would they be non-affiliated or whatever, would it be on the Monday? That's, I think, what he was asking.
Yeah.
Not that I should have to speak for him, but...
Well, I noticed the subs were not on this list of people, and I just wanted to ensure that they were somehow accounted for, it sounds like they are, but I would also make the case that come next year, that for new hires as well as substitute teachers that come on board who may not take the training now, well, at the end of June, that they be given this same training, maybe it could be videotaped and they can watch it, but it might be, I think it behooves us to ensure that this safety training, as critical and as important as it's supposed to be, we continue it for the new hires and substitutes, 'cause they, you know, they do come and go, so thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to page four, which is an explanation of salaried employees. So, the Department of Labor groups employees into two categories to be paid overall, you're paid by the hour, and if you're paid by the hour, you're paid for every hour that you work and minutes that you work, you're also entitled to overtime. If you are a salaried person, you have to fit into one of the exemptions to be an exempt employee, and being an exempt employee means that you are exempt from overtime. That means that you could work, you could be scheduled to work 40 hours, but you could work 50 hours and 60 hours and you do not get any additional compensation, because you are not entitled to overtime. You have to meet one of the categories under the Department of Labor standards, a couple of them are the executive exemption, administrative exemption, professional exemption, there's a computer exemption, and there's an advanced, no, that's advanced knowledge, outside sales. So, for the most... So for the most part, well, teachers do fall under the professional exemption, which says that you have to have, it has to be intellectual in character, and, you know, in advance, you have to have advanced knowledge in a field of study. So that's how teachers fit in. We talked about it before, but this pertains to all exempt staff. So that would be principals and directors and non-affiliated management personnel are exempt staff. And the state RSA 27543-B says that, and it reflects the U.S. Government Department of Labor standard, is that salaried employees receive their full salary, even if they only work, and it says, without regard to the number of days or hours worked, all right, provided that it doesn't fall under one of the exemptions that are labeled from A to E. So a salaried employee, the saying goes, can work four hours in a work week and can be paid for the whole work week. So there are some exceptions to that. So if no work was performed at all in the work week, then all bets are off. Also, if there's a disciplinary suspension, if there's an unpaid leave of absence under a bona fide unpaid leave of absence plan, if it has anything to do with FMLA, or if that salaried person just asks for, without coercion, voluntarily asks for unpaid day off. We can also prorate the salary of an exempt person when they're coming onboard, if they come in the middle of a pay week, a pay period. And we can also prorate it when they're leaving, if they're leaving in the middle of a pay period. And we have to offset, we offset salaries with sick time and vacation time and personal time, and also jury duty or military pay. So those are offsets to salaries. So that's the difference between an exempt and an hourly person, and that's why the teachers are going to be paid their salary.
Mrs. Ohensie?
Thank you. I have a question. Last time we had a chart, it was up to $270,940 for the teachers, the pairs, the food service secretaries, and non-affiliated, but when we spoke of non-affiliated, we only spoke of monitors and security. If we're adding these other things, and they're getting an hourly wage, shouldn't we add that into the total?
I think Mr. Donovan would have to answer that. Did the number come from you, Mr. Donovan?
The simple answer is yes. When I put it together, I just dealt with one, a couple of groups of people. I didn't go through, you know, a food service drivers with one person, I didn't. But yes, if they come, if they get paid, it would increase the number.
Okay, but we don't have any estimate.
There might be some people that come, that don't come and don't get paid, that'll reduce the number.
I would also like to add to what Mr. Donovan said. There is only one food service delivery driver, there is only maybe five sign language interpreters, there's maybe five or six somewhere tiers, there's one speech language assistant, and there might be three or four Title I school coordinators, ELL. This is a handful of people. Maybe two handfuls, or so.
Okay, we don't have the number of ELL liaisons?
There's only four or five of those.
And, and the crossing guards? Because they, were they in the monitors last time? Or are these addition to?
No, they wouldn't have been in the monitors. Monitors are in the schools, they're different positions.
Okay, so the crossing guards, there would be a number of them, and the 21st Century staff, there's a number of them?
What I can do, rather than sitting at the board meeting speculating, and, and what I can do is that I'll have a better number come the first board meeting in June, and certainly I can get back to you and give you some updated information on who, the intent of that June 25th date. Because we really, it could, a handful, I'm just kinda making up a number, we could say it's 20 people, but it could also be one. It could be also none. We don't know how many people are going to exercise the option to work on that Monday. We just don't. They may use a personal day, they may decide to take it without pay. So to speculate right now, we use the number, an estimation of about $270,000. That might go down, that, that, that could go down. Or it could go up to $2, so we don't really know.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Mr. Donovan, will you, would you be able to give us a total amount that this costs us after all these people say, yes, I'm coming in, or I'm not coming in?
I can get, I can get pretty.
Would that be easy for you to do?
I, I can get pretty close, right?
I'd like to request that, please.
Okay, that's fine, it won't happen until they get paid, though. Right?
Fine, as long as we have a final figure on how much it's costing us to give these people what they want.
That's fine, that's fine.
I'll just go. My question was similar, I was wondering if we had, like, if we, is there a way to assume that all of these people, like, say, everyone says yes, how, what's the difference between the 270 that was initially proposed last week, and if everyone on this list said yes, what is that number? I guess would be my question.
It's a thousand bucks or 1,500, it's hardly anything. And keep in mind, the 270 was an estimate, it's, I didn't do a person-by-person calculation. This group of people, my estimate wouldn't change. Small amount of people, don't make a lot of money. I, my number wouldn't change if I added this group of people.
Thank you.
I have one more question. I assume that food service is not working at all that day? Or are they?
They, they don't have, they're not required to work on Monday, because there's no.
Food service there?
Except for the cooks. Because that's usually the day that they're closing down the kitchens.
They're closing down.
Yeah.
Well, I just want people to understand that Ms. Cassidy has her own budget, she has to break even. If she doesn't break even, then it comes to the operating budget. So please keep that in mind when you do these things again.
Yeah, that is correct, because they need the money coming in from the students, from lunch that day, to help pay, that, that's how they pay food services.
So to summarize, these, what you're looking at, and what the public is looking at, is the hourly employees in the district that have two options. Option one is to work by attending a full-day training on Monday, June 25th. Option two is to exercise the options of not to come to work, they don't, they're not required to come to work by contract, and we, they're, they're not, and the district is not required to reimburse them. There was a discussion around the hourly employees, if they have these, if they have personal days, they can certainly take a personal day on that June 25th and be compensated. So just to kinda summarize, on June 22nd, we have, our students have a half-day, and then our faculty will engage in safety training. On June 25th, tentatively, I say tentatively, because I have to confirm, we have hourly employees, will have the option to work the day, take a personal day or not work and receive no pay. And I put that in red, that school officials will explore safety training options, depending on the confirmation of participants. That works both ways. I also have to coordinate that with the police to make sure there's someone available. So I still need to get some numbers in terms of hourly employees who intend to come to work that day. I thought that was my fault, because that's my alarm. Hourly employees that intend to, to come. So, you know, we'll keep the board updated in terms of interest, and, and as Dan said, we won't really know until after that June 25th, the final numbers.
Thank you.
Mrs. Oden? Point of order?
Kaufman?
As unfinished business, I just want to make note that at the last board meeting, there were two, two items on unfinished business that was skipped in the discussion, and I note that they're not on this agenda, and I ask that they be placed on the next agenda. Or you can cover them now, since we have the information previously.
I was gonna say, can you refresh my memory as to what these were?
Sure. They have, two of them had to do with, there were two items. The first one dealt with Strategic Planning Committee meetings, and the second one dealt with a survey review. And that had to do with the NEAS. And that was based on a sheet that was given to the board several weeks ago, it's dated April 9th. That was in our packet last week.
Is that the one that had six items on it?
Yes. So three of them have not yet been discussed at the board, two of them were referred to policy, but I note that that, they're not being discussed yet.
And the survey was moved to replace competency grading with traditional grading? Is that what?
Yes, based on, if you looked at that NEAS survey, and over half our students in each instance felt that the grading was inconsistent and unfair, so I think we need to look at it.
Isn't that going to be addressed in the next survey?
I don't know.
We're doing.
It was an item on the agenda, Mrs. Oden, that was skipped.
I, we've discussed this a couple times, and part of this has to do with the larger picture. And to recap, the purpose of NEAS and the Endicott Survey that Mr. Kaufman is referring to, yes, you know, that was the feedback we got around the competency-based grading, but I would, I would advise and I encourage the board and the public to read through the NEAS report in its entirety, and see exactly where the competency-based grading piece fits in, along with other aspects of the curriculum. To just pull this out and to single this out because of one survey would not do justice to the NEAS process. So I think it's, it's a healthy discussion to have, when the entire board has seen the NEAS report, and then you can have that discussions with administrators, teachers, the building principals. We've talked about this several times, and I, I would not advise to single out this one survey result regarding competency-based grading. Competency-based grading, prior to my arrival, was a pretty contentious topic at times, and I think that there is more to this story than just this one survey. So my recommendation would be to look at the NEAS.
Follow-up, Mrs. Oden?
Dr. Mosley, would you please?
Thank you.
Please finish.
My level of recommendation would be to look at the NEAS report in its entirety, and then we can have a healthy discussion about the survey results from the competency-based grading, the curriculum, the school culture, the leadership, all of those components that are very crucial to the NEAS report. Thank you.
Thank you. I've spoken, Mr. Kaufman, just a minute, I'll come back to you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I believe that this issue has already been before the board, and it was, it was moved, and then it was voted down. So I don't know why we are revisiting these issues, where the board has already made, already taken action. It's the same thing with the strategic plan. It's kind of, it's kind of exists, there are some people on this board, we just don't exist. We voted, we voted, we voted on these issues, we already settled them, but our vote to you doesn't mean anything. It's meaningless. So you bring them back up again.
Are we going to discuss this issue now, Mrs. Oden?
Excuse me, you're out of order, Mr. Kaufman.
Okay, so we have, I, I am pretty sure that we've already voted on competency-based grading, and we voted it down. And here it is again, okay? So strategic plan, we've already had, we've already settled that issue. We, we've already adopted a schedule, an ad hoc committee, and, and an approach. And here we are again with these, it's before the board again. So I think this is just a waste of time, and I think that we should respect the vote of other members of the board here, okay? And we've already had that business before the board, and let's move on to other business.
Mr. Kaufman?
I'd like to just follow up on what Dr. Mosley said. He's recommending that we review the results of the NEAS survey, the report, rather. And to the best of my knowledge, that report was done the day those folks left South High School, which was, I forget when it was, was it in February or, whenever that was, it's been at least a month, we haven't seen that report yet. So can you please add that to a future agenda? And can we all please get a copy of that report, so it can be reviewed by the board? And if I may address Mr. Guarino specifically, we, the board acted to create a committee. It listed a number of people that, a recommendation of specific people who might be there. Not, not identified by name, but by mayor, or whatever. It did not at all, in my opinion, address the criteria of how they would report back to the board, and that they, my motion that I had previously was really asking that Strategic Planning Committee to do the same thing this board does. Hold everything in public, make sure there's minutes, make sure it's televised, et cetera. Wasn't, this, what I had brought forth before the board was to ensure that that committee followed the same procedures we did. I also, my second thing, since it seems like we're gonna talk about it, was asking that the board give approval to the people that are nominated for that committee. If they are working on our behalf, the board should approve them. And that was what, one of my other motions was. Thank you.
Just a minute. Ms. Ohensie, did you have your hand raised?
Thank you.
And could we please keep our comments to two minutes? I, I think that's enough to get our point across, so I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can I get a word in?
Ms. Ohensie will speak, and then you can speak, Mr. Mosier, I'm sorry.
It's all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I just wanted to do a follow-up to Mr. Guarino's remark. I don't believe Mr. Kaufman was changing that decision. I think he was augmenting and adding things to the strategic plan to make sure it's successful. And I take offense to being criticized for trying to, you know, help the process. So I think you need to listen to what he, he's proposing before you pan the whole motion or suggestion.
Mr. Mosier?
Yeah, my thoughts on the competency grading. We have gone around and around on that, like Mr. Guarino said, and it has been knocked down several times, and we do have a certain factor that keeps regurgitating this stuff and trying to get it passed. I don't think that it's fair to the, the rest of the board, or to the districts, and we consider all of the work that went into the competency-based grading, and how far we've come along with it. And, you know, there are a few that are dissenting, that are not happy with, with anything. They're not happy with Mom's apple pie and ice cream either. So we gotta forget about the, about going and keep upchucking this, this thing on, if there's something wrong with it, let's fix it. But if not, let's leave it alone.
Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. We don't need an extra motion on, on the strategic plan, because we created an ad hoc committee, and all of that is, is in our policies, how to deal with ad hoc committees, you know, and, and so we've already have policies that, that direct our ad hoc committees. We don't need all this extra stuff on how they report to the board and all the other, all that other stuff. We have a schedule, we We have a schedule, we have an ad hoc committee, and we adopted Dr. Mosley's approach to the strategic plan. All that stuff that you're putting in there is contrary to what we've already done. So, this is why, we just need to move on and accept the votes, and please, let us get some business done. Thank you.
Is there anybody, Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I just have two small things. One, as far as the NEASK results, I did specifically ask the chairperson, the person in charge when he was visiting at South, and he said that we should expect the results sometime at the beginning of July, and not to expect it any sooner than that. Because I was curious how this works, because all of the people involved have their own jobs and lives. So, he said he gets the reports from them within, I think, three weeks, but then it takes the NEASK board, or whomever, a good like six weeks to get it together. So, July would be when we would expect to see that at the beginning. As far as the Strategic Planning Committee, I'm curious to know, I keep hearing that we have a schedule, and we have this ad hoc committee. I haven't seen anything on that yet, so I'm curious to know when the ad hoc committee meets, and then maybe make a decision about what the next step is, once I know when that happens. So, does anyone know when that is going to meet?
I'd be more than happy to discuss the strategic plan. I did provide the board when it was, when it was an agenda item. I did have a tentative draft plan on the timing, timeline, who would be involved, the process that we were going to follow. I'd be happy to revisit that again, if that's what people would like to do. I, no problems with that. I just, it's not on the agenda, so it's hard to supply all the materials to all of the board members and to continue that discussion. But I would be happy to do that again, if that's what the will of the board would like to do. So, it's there, we're in progress with it. We are, we're moving forward in that, but understand it's against the backdrop of many other initiatives that have been presented to the administration as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oden.
Quickly.
Sure. So, I had requested items be placed on the agenda, and they were placed on the agenda. I would appreciate that they be discussed as an agenda item and voted on. I'm happy to deal with the result of a vote, but I would at least ask for the respect and the privilege to, as a board member, to bring things before the board, which is our right as board members, to have motions, discussions made, and voted upon. So, would you please add those to the next board meeting? Thank you.
Your survey review that you gave us, it says move to replace competency-based grading with traditional grading. So, did you want to make that motion?
Mrs. Oden, I'm trying to help you with the schedule, because in 15 minutes, we're done, right? You time yourselves out at an hour and a half, so...
Forty-five minutes, Mr. Kaufman, two hours.
No, it's 90 minutes for a board meeting.
This is not a committee meeting.
It's two hours.
Oh, okay, great.
Thank you.
See how confused I am. So, the point is, I would just like to have full discussion about these things, like, these things were not on the agenda, people started talking about it, but there is no motion on the floor. I'd be happy to make that motion. Can I, can do that now?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So, let me get my paper. So, and we were talking about the strategic plan, and that's what I would like to address first. So, these things were circulated to the board previously, they've been out there for over a month. Move to require all strategic planning meetings meet the same criteria as public board meetings, including policy BCE, be officially noticed, held in public in the evening, are audio-recorded, provided transcribed meeting minutes in writing and audio form within five days, are broadcast on community television, include two public comment periods per session, are subject to all right-to-know law provisions, are subject to all board ed of education policies, shall report to the board at every board meeting, can only make recommendations to the board, the only exceptions are that this committee cannot conduct non-public sessions and non-meetings with an attorney. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. So, if I may speak to this motion, essentially...
Wait, I'm sorry, two minutes to that, please.
Sure, I'll do my best. So, what I would like to say here is, I'm just asking that the Strategic Planning Committee, when it does meet, meets the same criteria as the board does, in terms of meetings. Nothing more, nothing less. Since the board is not there, if the board were the Strategic Planning Committee, then all of this would kind of go with us. That's our baggage, if you would. Those are the rules that we operate under. But since this is a delegated committee, we've delegated our power away for the strategic plan to a group of people, we don't even know who they are, I would like to require these same folks to adhere to the same rules that this board has to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
Ad hoc committees have been, in the past, recorded. My committee on goals and objectives was recorded. The one on the, that Bob Halliwell did for the consult, not, the counselors.
Guidance?
Guidance, thank you, was recorded. So, it's a board meeting, and it needs to be open. So, I have no problem with this. I will vote for this motion.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I'm curious if this motion simply falls under our policy BDF advisory committees to the board. I feel like it's almost redundant, because we already have a policy on advisory committees. And for me, this one would fall under the umbrella of advisory committees. So, that, I guess that's my question, is why, how is the Strategic Planning Committee different than any other advisory committee that would fall under the advisory committee policy?
My experience with the advisory committee, I've only seen one of them, and that was when we were looking at space last year. So, I have very limited work, I mean, the work Ms. Van Twyver spoke of, those two previous ones, I was not on the board when those occurred. So, my, I'm limited. I'm not sure of the text of that policy, I'd have to go check it. I just wanted it to be very clear that that ad hoc committee has the same rules that we do. And typically, those ad hocks have several members of the board participating. That's not the case now.
Mr. Guarino, then Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Ms. Raymond, I think this is redundant. There have been other ad hoc committees, and in the motion that created the ad hoc committee, it says specifically ad hoc committee. We had, under previous boards, we had an ad hoc committee that worked perfectly well, that created a report on counselors, and it created a report, and I got a copy of that report as I entered, so, as I entered onto the Board of Education. So, I think that all this is redundant, and as Ms. Van Twyver already told us, the way ad hoc committees have operated in the past, there's no reason why we, you know, these come under all the policies that rule how ad hoc committees behave. So, it's really redundant and not necessary.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I'd like to, well, I just want everybody to understand that it is an ad hoc committee, correct by your statement, and if that's what we put in was an ad hoc, then it has to be a public meeting of the Board of Education, and follows all the rules. Just want to make sure that's plain and clear, that's why I support it.
Ms. Ohensie?
Thank you. I believe there was an ad hoc committee for Brentwood last year, and that was not all in public, for obvious reasons. So, I think there are more than one type of ad hoc committee, and I think everybody in this room wants this one to be open and above board. So, I think it would be just simple that we just pass this and move on.
I'd like to ask Mr. Kaufman a question. You gave us that sheet about strategic planning committee meetings. Move to require Board of Education approval of all strategic planning committee members after the board has reviewed their biographies or resumes, conducted interviews, and determined their suitability to serve on the committee. Are you still looking for that?
Yes, and that's the second one, but we still have a motion and a second.
Right. I just want to...
Yes, the answer is absolutely want that second one.
Looking for that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we're looking for, and the motion is? I don't have it here, that's why I have it.
This one, this one right here. Do you want me to read, do you want me to read the motion again, Madam President?
That'd be good, thank you.
The motion is to require all strategic planning committee meetings meet the same criteria as a public board meetings, as public board meetings, including policy BCE, be officially noted, held in public in the evening, are audio-recorded, provide transcribed meeting minutes in written and audio form within five days, are broadcast on community television, include two public comment periods per session, are subject to all right-to-know law provisions, are subject to all Board of Education policies, shall report to the board at every board meeting, can only make recommendations to the board, the only exceptions are that this committee cannot conduct non-public sessions and non-meetings with an attorney. On the motion, shall I take the roll, Madam President?
Yes, please.
Mr. Mosher?
Oh.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
No.
Mrs. Timmons?
No.
Mrs. Ohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six noes and three yeses, the motion fails.
Madam President? Ms. Van Twyver?
Point of information, does that mean that this ad hoc committee doesn't have to do any of those things now? I think, as Ms. Raymond said, it's already covered under the, what policy is it?
I'm sorry, it's the Advisory Committee to the Board, BDF. And it says, "The board may rely on advisory committees to counsel it as a means of discerning the needs and desires of the school district and its residents. The central purpose of advisory committees is to contribute to the educational program by conducting studies, identifying problems, developing recommendations that enhance the effectiveness of the decision-making process." Oh, go ahead.
Madam President? So, this is...
Have you finished, Ms. Raymond, have you finished reading that?
No, it's quite long, but the point of it is, is that "The board shall have the sole power to dissolve the advisory committees, and shall reserve the right to exercise this power at any time. The school board shall see that the public is made aware of the services rendered by the committees. It may appoint and shall see that the public is informed of the major conclusions and Public announcements concerning the organization membership or operation, recommendations and dissolution shall be made at such time and such manner as the board may choose." Let's see.
What's the one next to last?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Read that one.
Excuse me.
It's okay.
Mr. Kaufman?
Got it.
Yes, you're right, Mr. Kaufman. The second to last one is, "The board shall make appointments of citizens to advisory committees. The superintendent shall make appointments of staff members to citizens advisory committees after approval of the board."
Ms. Van Twyver?
This is not an advisory committee, it's an ad hoc committee, by the gentleman's own words. And that is a standard, is a part of the Board of Education. We have the right to make ad hoc committees, and they are to be treated just like a regular meeting. I'm sorry.
Well, I guess my point was, before, when I asked the question, is what in the motion was different that was, what in the motion wasn't already required? And from what I understood from the conversation, the answer was nothing, except for evening meetings, as opposed to perhaps this strategic plan could be during the day like other...
Advisory committee, this is not an advisory committee, that's what you read?
Yes.
It is an ad hoc committee, which...
You know, I think you're all getting off the beaten track there.
I don't think so.
I'm sorry, could we have the floor before we speak? Mr. Mosher?
Excuse me?
You have the floor.
I think that if you look up the definitions of ad hoc and advisory, that an ad hoc committee can function as an advisory committee. However, an ad hoc means that it's a committee that's put together on the spur of the moment to do a particular thing. It could be functioning as an advisory committee, that's what the intent was. So, there's a difference there.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to make the point that once, you know, we have a planning process, we have a beginning, we have a middle, we have our meetings, we have an end, we come up with an end product. That end product has to be approved by the board. So, Dr. Mosley is not going off by himself and writing a strategic plan, okay? That plan will not be the board's plan until the full board approves it, okay? So, I just wanted to make that point, this is, you know, this is going to be a collaboration between the board and the administration, and we need to treat it as such. And the meetings, you know, the meetings are going, I agree with Ms. Van Twyver, that, you know, an ad hoc committee meeting should be a public meeting. But there's also going to be workshops, you know, and those run a little different than a public meeting, I would assume, the way the planning process goes, when you bring in, you know, you bring in the public. I haven't really asked Dr. Mosley how is, I know what his approach is going to be like, and I know what the planning process is like, okay? But, so, all the meetings may not go the same way. They may, they may have like a charrette, or bring in the public and have, you know, sort of a think tank, you know, a session, something like that, you know? But, so, there's going to be, there's going to be public input, because that's what, you know, that's what he said in his process, so...
Could we make these short? Thank you, Ms. Ohensie.
I'm always short, thank you. In our policy, BDE, it's committees and delegates, there's a short section on special ad hoc committees. It's got two sentences. "By majority vote, the board may create additional special ad hoc committees to advise the board on special topics. The topics, membership and authority in terms of each committee will be specified in writing." We should see that in writing. "Members of the public are invited to attend committee meetings and to participate as deemed necessary by the committee." It does not specify the provisions that Mr. Kaufman made, so it's not inherent in our policy, and it would be good policy to, at least for this one, to make sure that it's open and transparent, because it affects the whole district. And I would hope somebody that was on the prevailing side reconsider's, and we can just pass this and move on.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I don't understand why you wouldn't want that to be publicized, to be videotaped and whatever. That would give those of us who may not be in attendance, or be on that ad hoc committee, an opportunity to observe what's going on. I think it's, it's, an ad hoc committee is a regular committee of the Board of Education, and it should follow the rules that we normally use. I just don't understand what the problem is here. Now, my voting second on his motion, I want to make sure that that is understood. This is an important thing. Why shouldn't we be able to listen to what people have brought up, and the pros and cons of these things? I just don't understand it.
Dr. Mosley?
Part of what I hope that happens in about two minutes, is that we get back to the agenda, we get back to what we are here for, and then, if we want to put the strategic plan on the future agenda, we'd be more than happy to do that, be more than happy to review that part with the board. The strategic plan, in my mind, starts with collaboration. I'm not over in the corner saying, "I'm going to create a four-pronged strategic plan all by myself." Look in the audience. It is a strong possibility, without any doubt, that Adam Mark Hu is going to be part of that. No doubt. Keep looking in the audience. It's... It's probably a good idea that principal is going to be involved in strategic planning. Look at the Board. It's probably going to be a Board member, a chair, or someone that's going to be part of the strategic plan. We've had some conversations with the Mayor's Office. The Mayor is very interested in being part of the strategic plan. But we've now wasted 15 minutes over an item that hasn't even been here, that that's not even on the agenda. But what I'm hearing is, there's no trust, there's no trust here. And honestly, that's not what the strategic plan is at all. It's built on trust. It's built on listening. So I asked the Board, "I will come back with the strategic plan, I'll show you the outline, I'll show you exactly what's going to happen." But this, what's going on here, no member of the strategic plan wants it, and I don't want it because it's not built on trust. If you want updates, I will give you updates. I will give you the information you need. But I'm not going to waste people's time. I'm not taking away people's time who volunteer their time to be with, for us and for our kids to make this, to move this district forward. I don't think that's appropriate. And if we make demands on people that we're doing here at the Board, they are going to quit. They are not going to be part of this. So, we have about four other items that we need to get through in about a half hour. We can put the strategic plan back on the future agenda and then we can move on. Please, thank you.
I'd just like to say, part of this is my fault. It had been on the agenda previously, and I overlooked it. So I'll take responsibility for that. I am kind of frustrated in the fact that we do have other business that we need to get on to. I was hoping there would be a vote and we could put this to rest. I think there was a vote, and I voted against it because I just thought, I trust you and I trust the committee, that everything that was asked for, that you will do. That's just part of how you collaborate and how you have transparency, so I didn't think it needed to be, have a motion. Ms. Van Twyver, and then we'll move on.
One more comment. It is the responsibility of the Board of Education by law to be the ones that take the lead and do the strategic plan, and I don't feel that this Board is doing the leadership in it. That's my problem. In collaboration with a superintendent.
We're going to move on to new business. The UNH Climate and Culture Two-Year Follow-Up Survey. Dr. Mosley?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. Probably about, I meet with the union leadership monthly, and this came up about a couple months ago with the union leadership. And there was some discussion around re-administering the climate survey in the district. And I also have had some conversation with some Board members as well, I'm not sure who they were per se, but certainly I know that it was agreed on about two years ago to actually, the survey was administered, results came in, and then there was some discussion or some type of agreement around doing the survey again. And so this is a updated copy of that survey that would gauge the climate of, gauge climates within the buildings, and so I'd like to, with Board approval, certainly try to redistribute this survey to our faculty and to our stakeholders to make sure that we get some information back on the school culture and various other, I'd say, other was probably a bad word, but probably other influences within the district. That ranges from, I would say, school-based leadership to even superintendent leadership to just really what's going on in our schools. So this is what I say, a draft, a draft. This was in your Board packet. This is done by UNH. All of these tests, all of these questions, they're not questions that you can modify yourself, these are questions that have been tested by professionals. So if there's anything that needs to be modified, I would make, I don't have the expertise to create a survey like this, so we'd have to continue to collaborate with the UNH researchers to make any modifications that we might be seeking. I believe we administered the survey in May, and we got about two months of, two months that we made it available to our faculty and to our staff, and then it was closed off, it was tallied up, and then the University of New Hampshire gave us the results back.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Is there a cost associated with the work that UNH should be doing with this? One, and two, do we have the results from the survey last time?
So we do have, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that first part of the question.
So, the two questions. One was, do we have the results from the last survey two years ago so that we can compare them? And two, is there a cost for the work that UNH would be doing by gathering this information and disseminating it back to us?
Yes, so the survey, the district paid about 10, for the initial survey, the first survey go-around, the district paid approximately, I believe, $10,000 or, how much did?
I think it was closer to eight.
Okay, $8,000. This year, this survey, just to get this draft, was about $2,500. So we had planned that in the budget prior to my arrival because there was a commitment to make sure that we did this survey again. Depending on what you're looking, the larger the survey, the more questions you ask, the more money the survey costs. So it'd be interesting to do a compare and contrast on the survey results, so we can get those results to you or to the Board. The old survey results, that is.
Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I mean, this is great that we have a starting base from UNH, and they set the pace last time, so it will be a direct comparison. My only question is, rather than have UNH administer it, we have a membership in the NIASC, and we were told that that's one of our benefits, that they will do surveys for us. So did anyone check to see that we could do that for free through NIASC? I mean, now that we have the questions set up, I mean, most of the hard work is done. Could we do that and save some money?
NIASC, again, NIASC is a service that's for the high schools, and certainly that's something that we could certainly explore. I don't have an answer for you on that. But don't forget, the questions here that the University of New Hampshire developed, I'm not sure if they're just going to give it to NIASC to distribute their survey for free, for NIASC. I mean, there is a cost associated to a survey that it takes time to develop. So I don't, I don't know if sharing the UNH survey with NIASC to make a new survey would fly for the UNH. If NIASC did have a survey, then it would be a different survey than what UNH. And I think the question, or the genesis of having UNH continue with the district is because people wanted to do that compare and contrast using the same survey that came out of UNH.
Follow-up? I mean, if that's the way we have to go, fine. I just thought, since we paid $2,500 to get it set up, maybe we can take what we paid for and execute it using our membership. If that's not possible, then we can pay more money to UNH. I just wanted to know if we could save the district money. That was my only question.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. One of the things about this survey was that it was only, it was a district-wide data is what we got. They had data for each school, but everything was reported, this question, and this is how all the schools answered. So we, from UNH, we didn't, we requested but never received school-by-school breakdown of the data, so you'd know what the climate was at Mount Pleasant or North or whatever. So whatever we do with UNH, we need to get school-by-school data. Now, having said that, I took the data from the original climate survey, and I do what I do with databases, and I created a per-school report, which, which I shared with Dr. Mosley before he ever joined us, and I did share with some Board members whom I spoke with. The other part of that, which we asked for and never received from UNH, was the actual data itself. They gave us summary data, they didn't give us the data behind the data. So if we are going to go forward with UNH, I would ask that they do those two things. One is, not only give us a district climate survey, but also a school-by-school report, and they give us the actual detailed data in a spreadsheet tabbed limited file or whatever.
Ms. Porter?
I think we had a school-by-school. Does anybody know the answer to that question?
I think we did.
I think we did.
Mm-hmm.
I saw her.
I'm quite sure we did.
That's because I created it. It wasn't, did not come from UNH.
I believe it did.
I'd like to see it.
Okay. Are you looking for a vote on this tonight?
Yes, that would be, I'm looking for a vote to move forward with, to administering a survey, climate survey, as a follow-up to the original climate survey that was sent two years ago. So it's just honoring or following through what was agreed on two years ago.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I just want to clarify, is the total cost for this survey would be $2,500?
This is what they cost to put this survey together.
But there's more money that's going to be required?
Depending on what we're looking for. So this creation of the survey is about $2,500. To, I guess you're asking-
What would be the total cost?
Okay.
That's what I'd like to know before I vote, because if it's another, what, $8,000 total? You know, we're spending money like crazy here.
Mr. Donovan?
I don't think it would be, we spent $8,000 total. It wouldn't be more than that, unless you're going to do a compare/contrast, but it's, there's in the budget $10,000. My guess is it wouldn't be more than $10,000. I mean, until we ask them, we can't get a true number.
Thank you.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to move forward with the UNH Climate and Culture Two-Year Follow-Up Survey.
I second that. Okay, did you want to speak to your motion? Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Is this teachers-only? So it includes parents and staff like the last survey? Mr. Kaufman?
Dr. Mosley?
This, it includes, the survey was available in the packet, so it includes teachers, administrators, other support staff. So it's a pretty comprehensive survey that I, that was distributed in the Board packet on Friday.
There are different questions than were asked before. For example, there were no Board of Ed, I don't recall there were any Board of Ed questions. But didn't we do a survey where we had, oh, that was the competency grading survey, they went to the parents and the teachers, I'm sorry, my confusion.
The motion is on the floor, can we vote on it?
Wait, 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 you have a discussion here.
Excuse me.
She nodded to me, so.
I did, I nodded to her, I looked over there, she had a hand up, I acknowledged her. Did you have something to?
I'd like to move on. I'd like to move on with the motion.
Do you want to move the motion?
Right.
Okay, we'll have to voice vote?
You acknowledged Ms. Hohensie.
Move the motion, undebatable.
Oh, thank you.
But you acknowledged her, you said you acknowledged her.
I went over to her, no, I didn't acknowledge her.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Call the roll, please. On move the motion.
Mr. Mosher?
No.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Yes.
I got clarification, I might want to change my vote, is that possible?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Yes, okay. So we have one, two, three, four, five noes and one, two, three, four, four yeses, so we're still in discussion.
No, it fails.
Failed.
The motion, move the motion failed, okay?
Okay.
Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I only wanted to point out that when Superintendent Comrade was here and we started this program, this survey with UNH, we had at that point said that we would survey the teachers, we were going to survey the parents, we were going to survey the students, we wanted to get the climate in general. And I guess I just wanted a follow-up to make sure that we're covering those other segments of our community.
So the motion is on the floor. Could you read the motion, please?
Okay, this is on the motion to move forward with the UNH Climate and Culture Two-Year Follow-Up Survey. Mr. Mosher?
No.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses and three noes, the motion carries.
Okay. It's getting late, so we're going to finish up. I would ask, I would ask, under new business, I would ask the Board, my fellow Board members to allow me to ask for a motion for reconsideration on the teacher and principal renomination list from November, from April 30th, 2018, as I should have abstained, as I have an immediate member of my family on that list, and I have never voted on that list before, and it was my oversight, and I apologize. So if I could get a motion to reconsider and a vote to reconsider, I certainly would appreciate it.
I move to reconsider the approval of the 2018-19 teacher principal renomination listed dated April the 30th, 2018.
Okay.
Okay, on the motion to reconsider, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Abstain. Oh, no, to reconsider.
To reconsider?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries nine to zero to reconsider. Do you want to vote to?
The motion?
Oh, the motion is to recommend the approval of 2018-19 teacher principal renomination. No, I just said that. So the motion is-
He can't hear you, Gloria.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move to consider the approval of the 2018-19 teacher principal renomination dated April the 30th, 2018.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Abstain.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
The motion carries with eight yes and one abstention.
Thank you, and thank you to the Board members, and I apologize. Okay, we're going to go to public comments at this point.
Excuse me, Mrs. Oden, point of order. You've just skipped over three other pieces of new business. You brought up one that was not on the agenda, and you skipped over lack of funding for textbooks, public school choice, and raises and retro pay for the 33 teachers. We need to know, these were dutifully put on the agenda, why will you not discuss them?
Because we don't have time?
I move to extend the meeting by 30 minutes.
Excuse me, and could you let me say that the textbook, I have been told, is going to curriculum and evaluation, that it's on the agenda for the curriculum and evaluation meeting that's coming up?
But we didn't know that, Mrs. Oden.
Madam President, it's not the lack of funding that's on there, it's a discussion- Madam President, it's not the lack of funding that's on there, it's the discussion of the schedule, that's my understanding, but I'm sure it might come up, but there's nothing, you know.
I may be able to clear this up, I'm not sure where the notion that there's a reduction in text, significant textbooks, it was mentioned at the Board of Alderman meeting. The budget for the year we're in now for textbooks is $349,000. The amount in the proposed budget for 19 is $356,000. So it's up, it's not down, and it's nowhere near $500,000. So I don't know where that came from, it's just simply inaccurate information, we shouldn't argue about inaccurate information.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan, I certainly appreciate that. So because it's late, we're going to go to public comments, and we'll discuss these other issues at our next meeting.
Point of order, Mrs. Oden? I, I apologize, but Mr. Kaufman made a motion to extend, and Mrs. Hoensie seconded it, and then we didn't vote, we talked.
Okay.
Call the motion.
Roll call, roll call and call the motion.
On the motion to extend the meeting 30 minutes, Mr.
To call.
I'm sorry, to call.
That's okay.
On the motion to, call, call the, call the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Though the, it carries, so now we're going to vote on the motion to extend the meeting? Okay, this vote is to extend the meeting 30 minutes. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses, and three noes, the motion carries.
Okay, we have until 9:30.
Point of order, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
So I would like to see us discuss those new business topics in the time we've just given ourselves. And if we need to vote on that, I move, I assume.
Excuse me, which, which issues did you want to?
The three that you skipped.
The lack of.
Lack of funding for textbooks, public school choice, and raises in retro pay.
I, I thought Mr. Donovan just explained the lack of funding for textbooks.
Well, I can add to that discussion, if I may.
Two minutes, thank you.
Sure, I believe there was a conversation with the Ed Council, something occurred at the Ed Council, and the information that was shared with the board came, was sourced from a teacher, and that's my recollection of where that $500,000 number came from.
I don't, I don't recall a number. What I recall was when our, when we had our Ed Council meeting last month, the month before last, the, it was brought to the attention of the Ed Council by a high school teacher that she felt that a number of books were out of date. She had presented a list, a chart that had been, the proposal for book replacements, and the chart was from like 2010 or something. And she was saying that, that many of these books hadn't been replaced per the schedule because other things had come up. And the decision was made at that point to send it to curriculum to get a little bit of updating from Dr. McKinney about where we are on the chart, like what, what the plan is for, for books. But I don't recall a number, and I, it's so long, I don't have that with me tonight.
Ms. Hoensie?
Thank you, I'd be happy to send this to curriculum. I was hoping for budget, I didn't know it was going to curriculum, so if we can do it in curriculum and get into in-depth, I know I saw figures that were different than Mr. Donovan, so I'm, I'm perplexed, but curriculum might be a good place to go into detail on this one.
Okay. Ms. Van Twyver, you've just inherited it. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next.
I'm sure we can do it.
The next issue is public school choice passports. Ms. Hoensie?
Thank you. The legislature just worked on a bill to get choice outside the district, and that was very concerning to a lot of people. It failed. We also have public charter schools where it takes money from the districts. So I was pointed out this program in Edmonton, Canada, and I put in two articles so the public as well as the board could know what this program was, and I would hope that the minutes would at least include the links, because the public can't follow this if they don't have any information. But what they did in Edmonton many years ago, they, they have what they call a passport system. It's a large district, bigger than Boston, 50% of the students go to districts other than the one they're assigned to. They, they have a passport to go and evaluate which school fits their needs. Each school has its own character, its own educational mission, an academic thrust that's different. So the students can buy in to what fits them, and their scores went up in Edmonton. This would provide choice within the district, the money would stay within the district. So every year, the parents would be given a passport to visit other schools if there's a seat available. You can't put them into a building where there's no seat. So there are contingencies, and that's how they had it up there. And transportation would be the parent's responsibility. We have that now, pretty much, if you, I don't know if we get a waiver to go to another school, whether or not the district provides it or not, but that could be something we could discuss. But having each school to, to take advantage of this and create a, a different, unique, innovative thrust with the principal, it would be something that would provide choice within the district. One, one school might focus on, you know, science or STEM, one might do art and dance, in addition to the standard things they have, but they would, they would do something to add a little flair, so that different schools would stand out for different interests. And what happened in Edmonton, they had three large private schools that joined the district. It was so successful that these schools joined the district because they could accomplish the mission that they had set up as a private school within the district. So I just thought this might be something that we discuss as a board, send it to the strategic plan, I don't know if that's terrible to even suggest, but this bill, Senate Bill 193, the education savings account, will come back. And unless there's another alternative within our districts to give parents choice, they're going to have a lot of momentum. This might take some of the momentum out of it, and we might be able to keep the money within the district and add something that would appeal to parents. They would get a buy-in, and we would get better scores, the way they did in Edmonton. It was just, somebody mentioned this at a meeting that was totally unrelated to this topic, and I thought I would share it with the board and ask where you would like to send it. I don't want to belabor it here, because nobody's read, necessarily read the articles, because they weren't included in the packet.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, I read the articles.
Oh, thank you.
I thought it was, I thought it was fascinating. It's very similar to the New York City School District. One thing, though, that really struck me when I was looking into this is that Edmonton has a student population of 100,000, and they have a school budget annually of over a billion dollars. I, I struggle with seeing how that can translate to our 18 schools and 11,000 kids. For me, as fascinating as that is, and I, personal disclosure here, I have relatives in Canada who go to England, they're in a French-speaking area, and they go to English-speaking school, that's the focus of the school that they go to, so that they can have that bilingual experience. Having said that, I do think that the focus on, for our size district, needs to be parity within our schools. Instead of trying to say that we're going to take one school and have them specialize in this, and another school specializing over here, I would really love to, to enhance our commitment, so that when you are in second grade at Broad Street, and you're second grade at Charlotte Ave, that you're getting the exact same education, so that our students have parity from school to school. I just would be really concerned about any movement that would take away the opportunity for a child to get a minimum, you know, high standard of education. And I, I feel like if we, if we say, over here at Ledge, you get this, and over here at Charlotte, you get something else, it wouldn't be fair to the students, and, you know, not, not even touching the, the transportation issues. Once we get parity, maybe then we could talk about it, but I don't see us getting a lot more money to invest in other cool things like this either. So, that's all.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I agree with Ms. Raymond, I, I don't think there's any such thing as public, public school choice. Public schools offer, should offer equal opportunity to all students by its very definition. So I, I think we have to have a commitment to funding, and that's, that's important. And, and I think it's important that we have a commitment to our neighborhood schools, and this, this works against that. And I think it sets a bad example that, that we can offer avenues, that people can sort of run away from our neighborhood schools, instead of making a commitment towards them, a funding commitment, and just a, a commitment to, to be part of that, be part of the community. And also segregation, I think, is a big issue, too. We, you know, we haven't, we really don't know the impact on, on, on how, how this impacts our, our schools with segregation. We don't want to turn the back, turn back the clock on, on segregation, and I think that's an important issue that's, that's missing here. So I think there are either public schools that provide equal opportunity, or there's private schools, and there's really no in-between. And so, so I'm really not a big fan of, of this, and I did read the articles also.
Ms. Porter?
I think this is an interesting idea, and I have worked in other school districts where they called them magnet schools, and it sounds very similar to what you're suggesting, and they were public schools. So there was one that had a focus on the arts or on whatever, so I, I do understand. I think that's a huge undertaking, and that would be something, that would be an extremely long-range plan. I think that once we have parity, there's no reason why public schools can't have personalities along with parity, and I think our schools already do have personalities. So I think it's something to keep on the back burner, it's a magnet school idea. It would take a lot to implement, and maybe talking about it in the strategic plan would be a place to explore it.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. What I found most interesting about the approach was the competition between schools, where schools were competing for students, and teachers wanted to be where they wanted to be. Teachers also had the ability to move. And I think competition is good. Right now, you, I think, I'll say this, and it's a, and it's, it's a little bit cynical, but we do have parity. Everything is mediocre and is in the bottom quadrant. Okay, we're half for reading, and the math is in the 30s, right? So, high school. So sadly, we have parity, and I think we need to shake things up. And that's why I find an approach like this, call it a magnet school, if you will, then let's do something new and different, because we're doing the same thing and we're getting the same results. It's not the fault of the teachers, right? They may not have enough time to complete the curriculum we asked them to do, where the kids are not doing their share in terms of the work that's necessary, and we have to address all those things. But the fact is, our scores are not where I don't want them to be. If I were a parent in the district, I wouldn't be happy with them. So, and I don't think, you know, we, I, I think we should accept that and deal with that. And if a proposal like this allows us to do something different, that will give more opportunity for more kids, and give parental choice, that keeps parents in the district. Because the state, when they do these laws, the first time, it may not pass, it generally, sometimes it's a cycle, two or three cycles where it, before the law does get passed. So we should get ahead of this curve, so we can keep people in the district before this law might get passed and people would choose to leave.
I would never support a program like that, because separate is never equal. Our kids, and I mean, our kids deserve the best education possible, and when you separate them, you will find segregation, you will find uneven parallels to every single thing. We know that for a fact. Separate is not equal. We need to keep our public schools as they are, that everybody have the same opportunity, regardless of what zip code they belong to. I do not support any type of voucher or private school. You want to send your kids to a private school, go ahead, I'm, I'm okay with that. I am not okay with sending any money from our district to any type of voucher-type program, period.
Ms. Porter?
I think that things can be accomplished in different ways. If we bolster our arts, our phys ed, music, art, our STEM programs, then you're giving all of those strengths to all of our schools. So it's the idea of a magnet school, of a specialty, but like every school deserves all of those things. So instead of cutting the arts, or, you know, not funding STEM, we need to make sure that we're funding that for all of our schools. And I really take exemption to your statement that we have parity and mediocrity. I'm, I'm, I'm a little shocked at that. I, I, I know that not to be true, so.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I am a parent of, of a student in this district, and I said it before, and I'm going to say it again, I'm a, I'm a happy customer. I'm a satisfied and happy customer. And the other thing I wanted to say, if you don't think that our teachers are competing, they know they're competing with other schools, if you think there's no competition, that public schools don't compete with other schools, I don't think you've been around our schools long enough to understand, there's lots of competition. There's competition within the district, there's competition outside the district, we compete with the, the, the schools, they compete with each other, and they compete with, with other schools, private schools and charter schools. There's lots of competition that, that happens, and the teachers are aware of it, I know that, and I'm aware of it as a parent.
Ms. Hoensie?
Thank you very much. I assume that there's parity between our schools. I know Title I schools get more money, but I feel that we, as a board, have been trying to be fair to all of our, I'm mostly thinking of our 12 elementary schools, and maybe the, the middle schools, the high schools, they already go back and forth, so it's, it's hard to say that, you know, you, you could switch, but it's not as big a deal, because you do have that crossover already. But I was thinking of it as a voluntary thing, so we've got 12 schools, maybe two of them want to do it, to try it out. And it would have to come from the school itself, either the parents, or the principal administration, or some combination. It would have to be voluntary. I don't want to impose this on anybody. I'm just looking at, I was very upset with the education savings accounts, and I was very upset, thought that things, that money was going to be leaving, and public money going to private schools. I see that as a very real threat, that it will come back next year in some form. If we could say that, look, we've got something going, where we can give you a modicum of choice within the system, maybe we can diffuse some of the angst of parents, and they could get excited about what we're doing. I don't think that all of the segregation would be undone. I, I kind of think that they would go to the flavor of the school, if it was, you know, a school that focused on, on, on music, or the school that focused on a bilingual program. It could be something small, it doesn't have to be an expensive thing, and it could grow over time. I'm just saying it's an idea. I just don't want to, you know, do nothing and be rolled. I just wanted to think proactively, and somehow protect our district, and make it more exciting, and, and make it so parents aren't needy to leave it. So all of your thing, your concerns are, are good, I mean, you don't want any problems to come about, but I just think it's, it's something to think about. I didn't even know that there was a program like this in existence. And they have 123 elementary schools, we have 12, so we're one-tenth of their size. So we would start small. So we would start small if we were going to think about this. I'm just throwing it out there because I got excited when I read it, and I'm looking for the antidote to the throwing money outside the district to make parents happy. So if you can come up with a better idea, I'd love to listen.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver.
I would like to make just one comment, and when I attended a bicentennial graduation, I had teachers come up to me and say that we had to do something because those, their graduates were going to the charter schools, that we were losing a lot of those middle school children to the charter schools, and then they would come back for high school. And I don't know if that's still true or not, and maybe the survey that we do, the climate survey, might point that out again. But I don't think, I mean, we have areas where we're very good, but there are areas that I think need a bit of improvement.
Okay. I would just like to add to this in the fact that I will ask that the links be placed on the website. Both these articles were fairly old, 2006, 2007, so I wanted to do a little research, and I came across something from, I guess the CBC would be the Canadian Broadcasting Corporation Company, from November 28, 2017, and the headline was, "Edmonton Public School Board Questions Superintendent Over Falling Test Scores." Quote from the superintendent, Superintendent Darrell Robinson, "It seems like I'm making excuses, but the reality is our classrooms are more complex." So this silver bullet was not a silver bullet in the long run. They are having problems with their students, too, the complexity. It's happening all over the world. When you have the movement we do in the world today, but this was not a silver bullet, that their schools now are falling as well as other places. We know since Common Core, scores have gone down. I think the NAEP showed that this year. So this silver bullet from Angus Macbeth just hasn't had staying power as to many of these programs that are rolled out that are creative. It is, kids have to have a solid background, they have to have a home where people are helping them, early childhood intervention, you know, there's a whole lot that goes into this, and it's built on relationships. They have to have somebody that has built a relationship that lets them know they care. So I can't, I, you know, I think we have enough to do on our plate without looking at this. I am concerned about Senate Bill 193 coming back, but I think, I don't think this is anything this board can look at at this point.
Thank you.
Ms. Oden.
Yes.
And thank you for the data, but we don't know that that wasn't the introduction of Common Core that dropped their scores the way they dropped ours. It's not definitive whether the drop was below where they were when this program started. It's unfortunate that it's dropped, but I don't think, it proves definitively, and I'd ask that we just send this to maybe a committee, maybe to Curriculum if Mrs. Van Twyver, Ms. Van Twyver would be indulgent to, at some later date, discuss this. I just don't, and maybe we have another proposal at the time. I just don't want to sit and wait for the ESAs to pass. I want to be able to do something constructive, and this may not be it, so that we can offer them something they don't have to look elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
This is Edmonton, right?
Edmonton, Canada.
Canada. Do they have Common Core in Canada?
I'm not certain, but I thought it was worldwide. They do it, they do it in Europe.
Ms. Van Twyver.
I guess I'm the only one that hasn't read the papers. I wonder how people got the copies. I didn't get one in my packet, so.
There was a link. I didn't have copies. I let people ask for them.
Oh, okay.
So if you ask Ms. Kinsella for it, she'll make you a copy of it and put it in your packet.
Oh, okay, thank you. I didn't know that.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Will it, can we send it to Curriculum?
Oh, we'll take a vote on that.
Well, we didn't on the last one. I thought it was.
Motion.
Move to send this issue to Curriculum.
Second.
On the motion to send public school choice passports to Curriculum, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Ohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Can I have his name?
Sure. Mr. Garino votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
We have one, two, three, four, five noes, and one, two, three yeses. The motion fails.
One abstention.
One abstention.
One abstention. I apologize.
I'm looking at, we have 12 more minutes, and I would like to finish this up. The raises and retro pay for 33 teachers. Ms. Ohensy, could we move that to the next meeting?
If we have to. I just want to know if there was any, we were told that they didn't fit the grid, and there was something that had to be done to accommodate them. I just need to know yes or no. Was there any resolution? It could be as quick as the superintendent makes it.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I've been working on this almost nonstop for two weeks. We're not quite done. Most teachers were paid last Thursday, they're retro, and they got their new step. This week, we're working on the teachers that we defined as pay calculations, teachers that haven't worked the full year for one reason or another. So working on them, then everyone will be done. But to answer the question, were some teachers moving from the old contract to the new contract, making less money? Yes, they were. They were given, they were kept at the same rate for this year. We're not going to decrease their pay. So they kept the old contract rate, and they received a $100 retro payment. So that's what that group of teachers received. And as far as any other details or questions, when we finish with the pay calc people this week, I'll update everything, and then if there's specific questions, I can answer those.
Okay, thank you.
Could we just send that out to the board or bring it to the next meeting, whichever the administration finds easier?
We'll update the board once.
Well, I guess it's, what do you want updated?
I want to know what a com, you're telling me that there's teachers that are being treated differently than the board's contract, approved contract. So they're operating outside the contract. I just want to know what that means precisely, how many teachers and, you know.
I wouldn't say they're operating outside the contract. That's a kind of a little over-the-top comment. There are teachers that had a higher pay this year than the grid in the new contract, so they're staying at their same rate this year. They're not working outside the contract.
Thank you. Okay. Public comments.
Adam Marqu, Ford, Delory Lane. I'm president of the National Teachers Union. We'll start with retro and raises. Part of the negotiations and understanding when we did this was that there was a few people that did not fit the mold, and we knew that. We negotiated that together with the school board's team, our team, and we've talked about that from the beginning. You know, we're satisfied with the process and that discussion for those people from the beginning. We knew that was going to happen probably this time last year when we were looking at things, so we're good with that. Also, retro and pay was in for almost everyone last week. We'd like to thank Ms. O'Gara, Mr. Donovan, Dr. Mosley, and all the people. I don't know exactly who else is involved, but there were some questions after the things came out, and what I heard from the staff was that they were very responsive and quick with their answers back to the people, and that when they had questions, there was a pretty detailed explanation of why things were the way they were. So that's what I heard from people, and I wanted to share that with all of you. I think the process that we went through with the notification and explanation of things was great. I think we should maybe look at using something similar moving forward because everyone had something tangible in black and white with information they needed, and I think it helped greatly overall. Also, with those people that you were asking about, Ms. Ohensy, they each got an individual communication from central office, and I actually believe Dr. Mosley sent those directly to those teachers, explaining what was happening and who they could talk to. So it was excellent communication to those people and to the staff about what was happening with the process. So I think it's something we look to use moving forward, you know, and hopefully now that we've moved to this new step schedule, we'll go back to a more traditional movement, which would be a lot easier to look at, huh? The union does not completely agree with administration's interpretation of the contracts. So we will be reaching out to administration with that moving forward, but we just wanted to let you, we disagree with some of the interpretations, but that's what we do, and then we sit down and we talk about it. So that's what I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay. Board member comments. Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I have two comments. Thank you, Adam. That was very positive. I like to hear news like that. Nothing controversy, nothing, just nice. Thank you. Okay. Secondly, I want to talk about main danceable elementary school drama club musical that's going to be presented this Sunday. The reason why I brought this up, Beauty and the Beast Junior, is because my neighbor, Max Snow, Max, he's watching.
He can't hear you.
Oh, I thought I was. Max, we're talking about, he's the beast in Beauty and the Beast.
They can't hear you.
Oh, okay. All right. Can you hear me now? Thanks. Okay, the musical, Disney Beauty and the Beast Junior. My neighbor, Max Snow, he's the beast, and I've been watching snippets of his practice, and he's going to be a wonderful beast. So I would invite all of you guys to come on Sunday, May 20, at 6:00 p.m., and to view that musical. It's going to be great because I heard him, and he is wonderful. And if you can't afford it, I will donate the $5 for whoever can't afford to go to see Beauty and the Beast. But I expect everybody to, from the board, to try to go and see that and prove me wrong. I'm telling you, it's going to be a great musical. Thank you.
Anybody else over there? No? Anybody? Mr. Garino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say real quick that next weekend is Prom Weekend for National High South. I want the students to have a good time, but please be careful and stay safe. Have a good time, but please stay safe.
Ms. Ohensy, did you have your hand up?
Thank you. I just have two things. I'd like the information provided to the board for approval for any legal concerns for, I mean, any, the board needs to approve any innovative changes to a strict adherence to the approved contract. I'm not disagreeing with what they did. I just want to make sure it's legal because you read the language, and it says what's supposed to happen. If we're not doing what's in the contract, I just want to make sure the board's aware of it, and it's approved. The other comment, maybe this goes to policy, I think we need to remove the board response to superintendent comments because nobody's able to make them. There's nothing, you know, you can't prepare comments, and everything's very limited, and nobody even made any today, and it's sort of an unnecessary slot now.
I just want to add, looking back in the minutes, that has often been the case, that nobody responded to superintendent's comments, so that's nothing new. So looking back over the minutes, I had noticed that, so. Looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, Mr. Mosher, did you have something you want to add?
I thought that was very interesting, that the superintendent and his comments, he managed to say some very profound things, but at the same time, he was able to keep it more short and sweet, and I compliment him on that. I think it would be nice if all the rest of us could do the same thing. Think about what we're going to say, say it, and get it over with.
I second your motion to adjourn.
Okay, roll call.
On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
The motion carries nine to zero. The meeting is adjourned at 9:29.